Oh, I don't know, it tastes like Dr. Pepper. I give it that bad amount. Convenient, two for a dollar.
Interesting.
Yeah. It might be a Pepsi, I don't, I don't know, honestly, I don't know. Yeah.
Have you ever drank it hot?
No.
You ever had hot Pepsi with that?
No. Really? Hot Dr. Pepper? Is it good?
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Republicans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Both in the second, any discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the minutes of the December 2nd meeting, I entertain a motion to approve them.
It's on move.
Our motion is on the second. Any discussion, additions, or changes? All in all, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close call. And the bills, bills in between $100,000, $898,000, ten. Got a motion to approve them.
It's on move.
Both in the second. Discussion or questions on the bills in between? I've got a motion of second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close call. And the current claims, $45,041.25, got a motion to approve them.
It's on move.
Second.
Both in the second. Discussion or questions on the current claims?
I got a couple.
Go ahead.
Uh, Gunderson Palmer Nelson, $1,659.96 on Boulder Falls, owner suit. And we at the next meeting have an update of the total amount that we invested.
Sure.
Thank you. The other one I have is the social media position at Chamber of Commerce. It's a third page, middle, $10,000.
The, uh, group along with the city slash, and by that it's the Evans Plunge slash golf course and the Chamber are splitting a social media position which will, which is overseeing the Facebook and the tweeting and the websites for all of the organizations. So we have one presence for Hot Springs going out to the public.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Great.
Who paid $26 to the police department for changing a filter? Can't somebody at the city do that? So I was paying Nelson's $26 to change a furnace filter?
Is that from the police station?
Yeah, it, I mean, it's downstairs, it ain't real hard to pull that out and put a new one in. I'd volunteer if they need it.
Okay.
Five? No, three. Another thing, we have two dumpsters in wintertime at the plunge. Do we need two dumpsters down there in wintertime? Can't they just do one in winter and then go back to two in summer when it's fizzier? Cause I'm sure they don't use two in wintertime. I could be wrong.
We'll find out. I never even thought about that, great place.
Another thing, the street shop bought some household paper towels and had them shipped in there. We can't buy that local. Costs $17 shipping, we bought two cases.
And that does that bill, Jim?
I, all I seen is household paper towels. I looked at the director bill, I didn't...
That's what we talked about.
Yeah, I, I, we're gonna have some discussions about that. And we don't need to be buying some of that kind of stuff from a out-of-town vendor for those purposes. Unless it's a special paper towel, and I don't think it is.
That's all I got, Mr. There.
Okay. Any other question or discussion on the current claims?
I was gonna say those furnace filters cost about $26.
I know.
I did.
Huh?
Depends on what kind you have. Filter free discharge for labor.
And labor is usually not being discussed.
Well, I can't see Nelson's going around there and changing up some light turgid.
I changed mine, but that's about what mine costs.
Go by that. Any other question or discussion? A motion of second to approve the current claims, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close call. And communication from the public, we've got two items on the agenda, but before I forget, we've got some Merry Christmas cookies here from the Boys and Girls Club for the City Council and anybody else who might want one.
Did you brave enough to come up here and get one?
No, they're for you guys. They are strictly for you guys.
Under communication with the public, you and Liz are very, very vague. Where do you want that? I'm not used to being on this side, guys. For those that don't know me, I'm Barry Hill, representing the Boulder Falls Property Owners Association Board. The Board of Directors, Boulder Falls Property Association proposes the following. The City of Hot Springs approves and moves forward with paving district as petitioned by the majority of the Boulder Falls property owners and with the stipulations contained in this edition in exchange for which Boulder Falls Property Owners Association drops the current lawsuit. If this proposal is agreeable to the City, the Board of Directors ask the City to draft an agreement to the effect which will ratify by a majority of Boulder Falls property owners and approved by the Mayor and City Council would become binding on both parties. Some supporting information for this, we have an additional signed petition to present this evening representing five more lots in Boulder Falls. This brings the total to 76.59% of the property ownership. The majority of property owners of Boulder Falls subdivision want to move forward. They would like to see the paving again in the spring of 2014. The Board of Directors anticipates that both Boulder Falls property owners who've signed the paving district petition will also ratify this agreement. We received through Jim Swart a letter from Mr. Smiley State and the City wished to wait until we had gathered more signed petitions before the City made a decision. The Board thinks that this letter means that the City quite naturally wants to reduce its potential exposure to individual lawsuits from dissatisfied property owners in Boulder Falls. Based on conversations with individual property owners who have not yet signed a petition and members who aren't believed, there is a contingent of people who will gladly join the paving district once the current situation is resolved. In other words, in the Board's best estimation, if the proposed agreement is in place, the City will be left to deal only with a few individuals. Property owners who signed petitions offer contribute $10,000 to lock toward the cost of paving in comparison to contributions made by property owners for paving and in some cases installations and utilities as well elsewhere in the City. $10,000 is the difference. For example, three lots along South Fifth Street, 209 South Fifth, 302 South Fifth, 409 South Fifth, chosen at random from the phone book, have been assessed $125 a year for 10 years or a total of $1,250 for the recent paving. And this is from communication from Joan Nettig at Fall River County Auditor's Office, 11/22/13. The owners of 1909 Hampton Avenue have been assessed $300 per year for 10 years or a total of $3,000 for their street improvements, number 2006-1, Fall River County for County Register of Deeds Office. When Jennings Avenue was repaid, the owners of Simpolt Plaza and the Carnegie Building were assessed a total of $1,750 and $1,250 respectively for those properties. Beginning in 2004, payable over 10 years, this is from personal communication from Carlos Shalone. The taxes generated by the lots in Boulder Falls subdivision have decreased approximately 32% from 2011 to 2012. A review of assessments of 60 lots in this subdivision shows that in 2011 the 60 lots generated approximately $72,108. In 2012, the same 60 lots generated approximately $49,742. This is a significant loss of revenue for both Fall River County and the City of Hot Springs. We believe paving districts, paving the streets is the first step toward restoring property values. If the City has a vested interest in maintaining or increasing property values, then the City also has a vested interest in paving the roads in Boulder Falls so that property owners and prospective purchasers have some incentive to build homes.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
With regards to 209 South Fifth Street, I own that property. And all we were paying for at that time, which was the $1,250, was for the asphalt that went in the street. That had nothing to do with any sidewalks, or curbs, or gutters, or the laying of base material for the street. It was only asphalt.
Thank you, Greg.
I wanted to get this done too, and so this will be another reason to move ahead as fast as possible. I will work on it, I promise you that.
Beth Spitzer.
Hello, I'm Beth Spitzer. I'm executive director of Key Hot Springs Beautiful. And I'm just here not to make a request tonight, just for information to keep you updated as to what's happening with the recycling program. And hopefully you are aware from reading the front page of the Star last week that recycling has been suspended at this time. And, um, we are gathering names for those who are interested in curbside recycling. And that would only be for those within city limits. And so I've already received approval from City Hall to have a blurb on the bottom of the next bill, Utility City Utility Bill that comes out to ask people to contact me if they're interested in curbside recycling. And we have to have at least 200 households express interest before we can move forward with that. So I just wanted to present that to you. I didn't know if you had any questions.
What kind of curbside are we talking about? Are you talking about two different cans?
The curbsides would be that they would get a additional container. It would have a different colored lid. It would be a 96 gallon. And it would be once a month pickup for approximately a cost of $595 a month. And that's for mixed recyclables. I should be clear about that as well. The mixed recyclables would, so they would be picking up glass, aluminum, now on into plastics, steel, and tin. So that's what the mixed recyclables are. It would be for cardboard or newspaper.
So they'd be paying another $595?
Right. This would be a separate bill that they would be paying. This would not be on the city bill. It would be a separate bill that would be paid to whichever hauler takes that contract.
Cheaper supply than pay.
If they're the ones that are new to it, then yes, that would be provided, yes.
So repairs for the cans wouldn't have anything to do with the city?
Right.
Thank you, I appreciate the information. Any other communication from the public? Yeah?
Sorry, I didn't get on the agenda, but, uh, last week with the airport advisory board and members, got with the safety committee.
Wes, excuse me. Wes, hand him your microphone.
We got on, excuse me, uh, safety committee about the egg lease on the airport. And he asked us for a proposal on what we thought would be right for leasing the egg bar with the airport. And this is not my tune, you know. The City Council and that will have to go through it and subtract what they think is right. On the back, here's a map of the areas that we're talking about. Been in contact with, uh, here, John Becker. He was gonna email me some copies of some leases on other airports. Got an email from him today, he didn't get it, get it here in time. Kurt Burke, one of our advisory board members, he talked to a local farmer and that on price per acre, leasing, and what he thought. Kurt, I'll be telling more what, what he said.
I'll just kind of, gonna split it up. The area inside the fence will be going back to grass. Won't be me, just the farming inside of it. So that would be, uh, some sort of lease or on upper junk bases or, you know, what they've done, gas, put it up on shares, like the third. But then it's left up to the City to get rid of that other hay that's their third. So I think if anything was written up, it would be, you know, on a share basis, 30 or 40%, which is, I guess, average. And then it would be up to whoever the individual is that puts up the hay to, to sell the city share and then the City would recoup the money that way rather than the City having to, well, get bids on this hay and try to sell it. On the outside of the fence where the mining's gonna take place, that is actual farm ground and looking at a probably a per acre lease for dry land farming. I know the City has a contract with the Mangastora Irrigation District, but from what I understand, unless the lake is over, it's either full or within two feet of the top, there's no money available on that particular lease. So basically in this country, that makes it dry land farming. So we're just looking at probably leasing that per acre. And that would be based on, that would probably change from year to year depending on how much they're mining, how much would be available. But it would be just whatever's farmable would be, would be what the lease is.
You can take a look at this and this one back, a recommendation back to the board. Full of safety. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Any other communication from the public? We've got a 715 hearing. It's on the zoning ordinance in the Golf Course Commercial District. This is a public hearing that somebody wants to, did I miss you on communication from the public? Can't come back to it. Uh, anybody who wants to be heard on this hearing on the commercial district of Golf Course, this is the time to, to speak up. This is a public hearing. Okay, I'll close the hearing and go back to communication from the public. Just, man, I'm sorry, Steve, I just had a question.
On that line extension for McDonald's?
Yes.
Who paid for that?
City.
Is it the City's policy then to pay for line extensions and improvements that way?
I think that the committee thought it's a, that it's a real economic benefit to do something. That's what we wanted to do, because we were doing whatever we could to get McDonald's to come into town.
So the value range then is economic?
I think that's what it was. I can't speak for the committee.
Well, and partially because we were that manhole in front of your motel there, Steve, a next town. And that's a future upgrade for city utilities there to bring it closer because as that golf course develops, we're gonna have to do something about that back and down. As it goes from like 14 inch or 16 inch pipe to 10 inch pipe before it goes across the bypass now. And that was also in our thoughts, to improve our own infrastructure in the same way.
When I did the Forest Service building, we had to do line extensions there. And of course I asked the City to pay for some of that and absolutely not. I mean, that was the, the city's policy is not to pay for line extensions. It's up to the business owner of the residential. So I'm just wondering, where, where is the change? I mean...
That was a different council, Tuesday.
So we don't have a policy then?
Well, like I say, and that is, that's an upgrade to eventually upgrade the city.
No, I understand.
And the last thing you want is sewage dumping out in the front of your yard out there because that smaller line going across the bypass is...
And I understand that, but what I'm asking is why, if it's economic development, that you get line extension paid for for free, why that didn't take place when I built Forest Service building? And I understand it's a different council, but what I'm, what I'm wondering is why doesn't policy follow council to council? Does policy totally change when you get some new members on the council? I don't know if that's the case.
It may have been based on a case-by-case basis too.
And, and that's what I ask, is what are some requirements if it's a case-by-case? And here it's economic development. What is not Forest Service building? Is that not it? That's economic development.
I can tell you that there is no policy that has regularly been followed by the City. It changes with councils changing.
It depends on who you are then, getting it.
No, more, it, that depends on the timing, I think, than who you are at Hot Springs.
Could be who you are.
Uh, I think it's the timing. We put in all the fire hydrants and the manholes out in Boulder Falls on the back nine, and we're not doing that anymore at this point either. Or we furnish them, but we're not doing that physically.
And when I did the Forest Service building, I paid for the manholes and fire hydrants too. So that was not the policy then? You, you said that a while back, that policy is the City covers manholes and fire hydrants. If they went covered on that project, correct?
I don't know about that, but I know today if somebody came in, we would not do it again. Because it changes with councils.
Don't you think here in Hot Springs, we should have a policy?
Yes, I do.
So that it's consistent from whether a council changes or not, so people know what to rely on?
Right. I agree.
And many people talk about that. They say, well, we don't know if we're gonna have to pay for that or not. You know, somebody got it for free in the past, but maybe if I asked for it, I have to pay for it. So I'm just saying, for growth in Hot Springs, you gotta have a policy that's consistent. You can't just pick out whoever asked for it, make up an agreement that it's economic development, but what is the difference between the Forest Service building and McDonald's? They're both economic development.
Right.
And that's so important for our growth.
I agree. I've gotta, I've gotta go to do something if we can for policy. I don't know if we'll come up with a policy that lives very long. Because it will probably change from council to council.
We should get them something more that's fast, so that we, we can consistently count on it from year to year. If you're gonna grow a community, you have to have that. You can't just change the line every week.
Right.
People want it best.
Okay. Thanks. Any other communication from the public? Okay, your word misses.
I just like to reiterate, you know, because you stay the whole time that I come out here. You gotta do that stuff all the time. Why isn't it there now? Why isn't it this way? That is your change. Policy, every council is changing. There must be something regularly change. It would always have that, so 2011, 2012 is changing. I, I just hear it so often, if there's a justice policy, it would always have that. It can be changed, the council, the council. There are some rules.
But in this instance, I'll go back. We had a pipe stuffed under Highway 71. Who paid for that?
And I was there for the discussions.
And there, there's a reason for this, guys. At some point in time, we're gonna have to take that out to that manhole in front of your motel there, Steve, and tie that in because that next town is, we could have an aqua mess there. And that's, that's where I was thinking from.
Right. And you're, you're basing that all on the expansion of the Boulder Falls subdivision? But it, because that pole comes down that way?
Yeah.
Then adds into it. Well, in the current situation right now, where there's no interest to build out there because of Hot Springs, what is the big interest? They put that line there now. I mean, it may not be needed for the next 10 years.
But it may be needed next week.
Is there gonna be some big explosion up there of growth?
But it backs up there and turning your place.
It, it won't because that, at the time that was put in, it was studied by the city engineer that that was more than about that six inch for the pole.
Which city engineer?
Which would've been John Shelton.
Who wasn't an engineer?
He was hired as an engineer representing the City, so therefore you rely on him, Carl.
I never did.
The council.
That's why I was always in disagreement with Mr. Shelton's. He was not an engineer and he shouldn't have been on the job.
Well, then the City should've had somebody responsible. It's not my fault to you. That's your fault. The City comes a new city. So don't look at it as a resident, we were responsible as a city. If they should've said, that line won't handle that motel, that should've been taken care of at the time.
Is it handling it now? And it hasn't?
Yeah, it's handling it.
Yeah.
So that's why I said there was no need for that at this time.
But it could come to a point that it wouldn't handle it.
Eventually it would, if the subdivision grows.
Yeah, and I, I don't disagree with that. And that was why that, that line is put underneath of the highway at that time. And that was installed for free, by the way, I've been working with the contractor, we're doing the road here.
The City installing it.
Right, but there was no cost to reinstallation. But it was put in there when the highway was under construction.
Right, we didn't have to floor the highway or anything, right.
They did a compaction with the other.
Right, we did it for future.
All you did is provide a piece of, a sleeve.
No, we put it in. The City crew put it in.
Yeah, but you didn't have to dig it. If they opened the ditch, the contract... Yes. So it's not like...
That was the reason in behind it.
It's in the first, down the line, future growth. We have not seen a future growth yet. So why I'm saying is that line that was put in, under there, was strictly for McDonald's. And you know it.
For future growth, I guess.
And future growth, but at the point right now, the future growth isn't there.
You can't blame, you can't blame all of that future growth on the City. It's not the City's fault.
You're missing the point. The point is, is why was the extension put there now? You're missing the point. The point is, is why was the extension put there now? It wasn't for Boulder Falls because the growth isn't there. So therefore, the reason it was put there was for McDonald's.
You get future activity on that line.
But the future activity isn't there, so therefore, what I'm saying is that line wasn't necessary now. But it was necessary for McDonald's.
That's your point of view. That's not the point of view of the city. Anyway, it was put in.
And if it was all board, it says, "I think it should have been connected to city sewer when it was plotted and built." Right.
On what's that?
On that lot on that corner.
It had access to it, yes. And it was, in fact, you put in this, so it had sewer.
So they're given a pay.
All I'm saying is you need an ordinance in place so that everybody understands who's paying for what. It doesn't change from week to week, because it does now, and you know it.
Okay, there's something else we have to do in that hearing?
No. Hearing is done. I'm gonna continue. Ordinance eleven thirty-nine is the, this is the second reading on the ordinance changing zoning in golf course commercial and town homes, town homes, condominiums, et cetera. What's the feeling of the council on this? The hearing has been complete.
Make a motion. We accept it.
Motion to second to approve the second reading. Discussion from the council. Call and roll, please, and a motion to second to approve the second reading. Ashley?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Wina?
Yes.
Get out of this, Mr. Mayor. Thanks. Wes, you're not ready on that demolition time zone survey yet, or?
No, I, I looked over it this weekend. I gotta talk to you about some of the notes. And maybe hopefully we can, we'll put it in the next packet so everybody can have a chance to read it through it and add or subtract.
All right, thanks. And well, this is also second reading of supplemental appropriation ordinance. What's the feeling of the council on the ordinance? And this is also a public hearing, if anyone's interested, as comments. Drop off this to the last meeting. Got a motion to approve the second reading, the second, call and roll. Discussion or questions?
Is this also, about fifty thousand, we actually put aside that? No, I don't have to do with that, is it for, oh, for, for, uh, buildings and stuff?
Well, that's the next year's budget, twenty fourteen. This is, this is for the twenty thirteen year supplement for the activities for this year. Twenty fourteen supplemental, or there are no supplemental appropriation ordinance, this is the twenty fourteen. You have the reading in September for next year's appropriation.
And of course, late next year, then, if we overrun something, if it's problems, any grants that come in, that will have to be done next year with another ordinance. Any other questions on the ordinance eleven forty-one? Discussion? Got a motion, a second, to adopt the second reading. Call and roll, please. Burris?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Wina?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Get out of this, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Resolution, we've got one here to surplus some golf course equipment. Some of this stuff out there is pretty golf course oriented. If we surplus it, Jason thinks he can move some of this, at least have the ability to, well, try to market it, even possibly on eBay, he was saying. Think, did you talk about this at all at committee meeting two S?
We did a little bit, but there were some questions on like a skid steer and stuff. We kinda talked about that today. And I guess we didn't get any answer, I guess, on what that condition of skid steer was. But I guess even if we surplus, if we find that we still wanna use it in another department, we still can.
We, yeah, we don't...
We'll surplus.
It's just that if we want to keep something, we gotta make sure to tell Jason not to, not to sell it because then he would have...
Legally, can you, if you surplus that, I mean, I guess, don't you have to first allow it to be sold to the general public before you start putting on anything else?
This is the first step to even get it to the general public's sale. You have to surplus it before you give it out.
But that's... So you said he was thinking maybe eBay or something like that? There's a lot or somewhere, you have to actually sell it back to the taxpayer that purchased it before you put it up on eBay. I might be wrong, I'm not an attorney.
I think you have to put it out the airport.
Did you ever find out, did he fix that skid steer?
Uh, all I know is that it was a part. It was in pieces to determine what was wrong with it. To my knowledge, he checked with all the other departments to see if they had an interest in it, yeah.
Well, I think I'm just hearing maybe that the airport was maybe, maybe, might be interested in a skid steer.
Go see Jason and see what he's got for surplus.
Maybe we need to make us a list and give it to each one of the department guys before we just... Well, apparently they didn't see it.
Okay, well, this is more than house looks, too. A lot of this is very golf course oriented, construction, so... Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So move.
Got a motion, a second, more discussion? A motion, a second, to approve the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close call. The next resolution is on the grant application for some of these trails we've been looking at recently here in town. We've got everything pretty much put together for it, and I would need an approval of this resolution to go ahead and make the application. Got a motion? And a second? Discussion or questions?
I'd kinda like to see a map at some point as to exactly where it's gonna go and... When do they let the grant?
It's like late this year, they want, they want construction to be in twenty fifteen. Takes a long time to go. As it always does.
Yeah.
So it would be late, it would be like summer or fall before they ever let the grant.
So are we planning to do some of our own work before we get word on this? Or we gotta wait two years before we can do that trail?
Well, we're gonna wait till at least summer or early fall till we hear about this. But then after that, it takes longer to go through the mid-process. That's why I'm thinking it'll be probably fifteen.
We put in the budget to do this, I'm back, I thought, this year.
I do, too. I thought we...
This over here, yes.
This is, this is that piece from Heaven's Flows to Chautauqua.
Up over that hill, that mountain goat, that trail that you guys couldn't go that day?
That's not that.
Goes up to that, not over.
Well, I just, I wanna make sure to kinda concentrate on this and get this done first. And kinda keep working our way up the bypass, as well as heading a new direction.
But I think that's why we put it in next year's budget, so that we would concentrate on getting it done.
Well, I'd like to kinda go where that people actually are, too, I mean.
Got a motion to approve, some of... A second? Oh, we already had it. Didn't write it down, but I managed. Any more discussion? Got a motion, a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close call. And we've got another resolution here for rates at the golf course for this next year. It's mostly got a two percent increase in there, but the cart storage stayed the same, and the golf cart rental fees stayed the same. And thinking those golf carts get kind of old, they had one raise the rate on them unless we had newer carts. Got a motion to adopt the resolution?
So move.
Second, got a motion and a second? Discussion?
The carts are getting old. Is there a plan to start locating them out? Or are we gonna wait till they all break the contract before, by five fifteen?
Normally, they have them all at one time. What Jason wants to do is to do part of them several years, and we don't have all at one time. But there's no final plan, at least there hasn't been one to go with by some. I think the committee's probably talked about that, too. Okay, I got a motion, a second, on the resolution. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close call. And home business, we had a motion at the last meeting to put in this backflow, backflow presenter at the beginning of line at the edge of the city limits by Topo Jones going out to the private water users. It was tabled until we got the costs, it got costs in the packet. So the motion is back on the table. Discussion?
Kinda thinking we probably better protect ourselves and do it. This really wasn't until rural water got to where they were pumping their own water, this really wasn't a problem.
No.
But when they drilled their own wells and started pumping water into our system, that became a problem. In order to keep us safe in case something happened, we're not ever gonna be sucking their water back into our system. I think this has been the equivalent.
This is, this is a recommendation of the public area, this is...
Okay, I'll make the motion that we...
The motion's already on the table. We don't need another one?
No.
Nope, that was on from two, two weeks ago.
Just tabled?
We tabled?
It was just tabled.
Okay, sorry.
So there's no other discussion? Got a motion, a second, to approve putting that in. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close call. Our meeting is, we've got a series of contracts here for the meter reader, pro shop manager, golf course superintendent, animal control, R and R veterinary services, the assistant golf course superintendent, and the police department janitor. Do you wanna handle it individually, or would you want everybody to go all at once? I think we can do all at once. Okay?
I, I had a little bit of a question about, um, I know it's, it's that's the place, but I don't know. I'm, um, I'm a janitor, I'm a, Teresa.
So you want changes to your contract?
Well, it should say clear. It should be open, or we change it everywhere.
We, we might want her to.
Is that which one of you? I don't know. I just thought that was kind of open ended.
On which one? I can barely hear you.
On the contract twenty fourteen service.
I guess it's understood as that the police department doesn't say it in there.
That's the only place she's cleaning, so naturally that would be where it is.
Yeah.
But it's an assumption.
Where else does she clean it?
She'd go anywhere, you know, I guess, and put her to the lip.
We'll add something in there just to say police department.
Okay.
Hey, do I have a little motion that I have?
I got, I got something I'd like to... And I, I guess we should have talked about this before we voted on all this. I, I have a hard time letting the golf course superintendent take vacation every year from the classes or whatever he goes to. Most of that's just to, well, kinda like what we're gonna be voting on tonight at the golf course, something like that will come on one of these classes. How we're gonna vote, spend fifteen thousand dollars till somebody tells us we should do our golf. But I just, I know it's part of his contract, but that's where a lot of my friends go out and play around golf for a week or whatever he does.
It's a little bit more than that, but it does cost money.
I know it does. I have a problem with that. Is it the same school every year, or is it something new each year, or is it... It's different.
It's different each year, and the different, different vendors are there, showing different products.
Is there anyone a little closer, or?
I think there's one a year. They go to different places, and it's always with the owners.
I'm sure it is.
That isn't the...
That's here in Hawaii, isn't it?
Yeah, no, it isn't a fair of old, isn't it, all that?
I, I just have, I don't think the tag fairs ought to be threatened, something like that, myself.
We'll talk about that next year, let you try. Pull in contracts.
Oh, yeah, that's...
I, I had a question on both of them, too. Do they use a vehicle? Or phone for the city or that?
It's not in the contract. It's just something to do with the street.
Do you want me to do that way? Just, I, I don't know.
I think we wanna leave it that way in case it's abused.
I don't know, what were you talking about?
Vehicle or phone?
Fourth.
Or post.
Both for the golf course thing?
So you're questioning whether or not he should have a phone?
Well, they're basically on call. I don't know. Are we supplying one now, or someone in?
They'll city supply itself.
Is that something that we...
Well, if he's on call and they have a water problem, usually he's the first one to respond.
Golf course?
On the golf course, you mean?
Golf, golf.
Is that what you're talking about?
On the golf course. Either the golf course.
A water problem at the golf course, right?
If there's a water problem, that's where he responds. And if he's gonna be moving equipment around, he's gonna need a safe vehicle. Is that your second question?
Yeah.
So as far as changing those two things, it makes sense to...
I mean, they do use a boat, that's what I should say.
Yeah, they are utilized, and I've never heard where he's improperly used either one.
I was wondering if it should be in the contract or not, but if John says it's an administrative decision, I guess.
I think we might be better off that way. Sometimes it's stuck in the contract, or all of a sudden the pickup breaks down, and something in the contract, we ought to do something with it. That's my thing. And just working with it. With regard to twenty fourteen dash seven, we're approving the contract for a police department janitor. Yes. It's designated as such. I had to make a motion, then we pass all these. Good. Got a motion, like Carl, to approve all contracts?
All second.
A second, more discussion? Got a motion, a second, on all contracts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close call. And we need authorization to sign the airport grant closeout documents. There's two different grants that are final, and this would be the final paperwork. And they're a couple of years old, but everything is finally done with the grants. So I'm gonna take a motion to allow me to make the...
So move.
Got a motion, second, second. Discussion or questions?
This, this is quite a chunk of money that we give back.
I, it's not a whole lot. How much do we give back? Does he remember right off, Harley?
Uh, one of them is seven, excuse me, eleven thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and eighty-five cents, and the older one is a hundred and thirteen dollars.
I guess we don't have your money, Don. That's a lot of money.
Any other discussion or questions? Got a motion, a second, to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close call. Change order with Hill's materials. Think we talked about that at the public works. I have a motion to approve the change order with Hill's materials. I'll make the motion. Motion, a second. Discussion or questions? What is the, uh, it's time.
So not...
Original completion will be December fifteenth, and this takes until May fifteenth. That is five months on to it, because of the order. This is on the, um, Almond Street Bridge and paving project.
No, I have a problem... No, I have a problem with this. I wouldn't have a problem if they hadn't worked but one day of the contract. If they wasn't up there trying to work and nothing, and now we're gonna let them slide for five more months, not have them pay a penny? I have a problem with that. You know, we do this to every contract, that's why they do it.
Is there, is there a penalty clause in the contract?
Hundred dollars a day.
I'm sure there is, but we don't have all much of this.
And they're asking for this extension?
Yes. And with the next item was similar, we also got one on the, uh.
We still have a right to negotiate at the end of the project. This part of the contract. You sure? That's what I was told.
Is there a precedent?
Authorization, I've got a motion, a second to approve the change order.
What did Tracy say about this? Tracy could go either way, it sounds like to me, it all depends on who he's talking to.
I know early on we were talking, he said that snow and the cold weather early October put them back, even if they would've started, they wouldn't have done. But they did not start as we had wanted them to.
Oh, it's gone five days after the storm, they could've started working within five days.
Can anybody at the table for sure say that there's a possibility of renegotiating at the end of this project?
Nobody told me that, I don't know.
I would say let's table it till we know, before we make a decision.
I agree.
Set up a motion? After your motion. Got a motion, a second to table this, all the favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no. And, uh, next item is change order for Simon Construction. It's the same project, it's called the Almond Street drainage, but it's scheduled B, which is all the pans around town. And this is the same request, they're looking for five months because of the winter. Got a motion to approve this change order.
I'm glad to table both of them.
You want to table on this one, then?
Well, they actually worked, but, and that's, that's what gets me, you know, if they could pour concrete during that time, Hill's material could work, other than one day, but.
How much concrete did they pour?
They did.
They got quite a bit done, but the weather hit them too, but we get back to the point. We say it's okay to use the ice. We gotta treat everybody the same, you know, like Steve was saying here, so.
And Steve was too, on both.
And there was a heck of a snowstorm, and I know Hill's has got a lot of stuff grabbing and stuff too, and they got hit pretty damn hard.
Well, I've.
Not making excuses for them, but, you know, it was. But one of those deals.
Make the point, now, are they not getting ready to do concrete?
I think they, I think they put that off. Are they? Who is? Simon or?
No contractor, I don't think, but what I'm getting at is, one contractor's pouring concrete, and now you're gonna give the other guy a slack.
One of them poured the floor of the golf course, and they're not going to want that one.
Because in the middle of the winter, it's made your quality go down, or in summer, or whatever.
If you're not.
You gotta heat it, put blankets on, and if you allow that, your quality does go down.
Right, but you can put.
It can be done.
It can be done. My point is, it's treating everybody the light, because when they went entered into that contract, they know when they were going into that prime season, that it could be hit.
Why didn't you tell us there? Didn't you say they shouldn't have bid on it if they couldn't have started? You said that yourself.
Yep.
I'll second your motion on table.
Good, I, we don't actually have a motion on the table, but if we want, we can just.
I'll make the motion to table that.
I don't think we can table it unless we have a motion on the floor, but if we want, we can take more action on it tonight, and we treat it like the last one. You can't table a motion, there's no motion to approve the change order on the floor.
Oh.
I'll make the motion to approve it, though.
They got a motion to approve it. I'll second that.
I'll make the motion to table it. Carl, you can second it.
Got a motion to table, all the favor say aye.
Aye.
Now you gotta see why it takes forever getting it done.
Hey, they're both tabled. The long range golf course master plan. We had a gentleman here looking at the golf course, and he's looked at several parts, he's interested in the water system, looking at general liability of the course, quite a few different areas. But what he wants to do is, if we want him to come in with, uh, a map that shows all the elevations out there, and that would be the first part of the master plan. I believe that's what most of this is, no, it's, it's different parts of the master plan, primary master plan, final, but it also includes some, some mapping. The other thing that's in here that Jason would like would be market analysis, so we would know if we're charging too much or too little, where our market is, where we should be looking for offers. And Jason thinks it would help the course, and I think that you were involved in some of the discussions with this too.
I thought Jason was gonna be here tonight, so you guys could ask the questions, you told me he was bigger, so.
Wasn't there a market analysis done when we bought it? I wasn't involved in it, but wasn't there, wasn't there some kind of a, some kind of analysis as to what was first by some kind of, changes?
And that's what this current market, market analysis would be basically, Don said, to be, to figure out if we're, aren't charging enough, if we're charging too much, or what the people actually here would really see, you know, or want for this golf course.
And where do we advertise, or where do the people come from? Who's the customer base?
He make an agreement with us to use his money for his vacation summer, Don, which ones is?
There you go.
What's your pleasure on the master plan spending, it's about sixteen thousand dollars.
Hard for me to forward on something that I just got last week, 'cause I haven't talked to Jason in a minute. I was, I was out there when the guy met with Jason and Wes and Harley, I, I heard him.
What was your feeling about it?
I don't think it's a bad idea myself, it's a lot of money just for a study. We did, how much we spend in Evans Funds Roofing, we probably won't go that way if we spend how many thousands of dollars on that.
Well, being you two top, Don, how do you feel? Do you think you would bother with this, or?
Sure, maybe you got blue again?
I told him what, we had to find out the wishes of the whole council. I mean, the other guy put on a presentation. Can he tell me what we're looking for? I don't know. I mean, if you guys want, you can maybe have him come back, and maybe do a little more in-depth presentation to the whole council, I don't know.
Usually a market analysis is good for five to seven years from what I understand. So it would be proper time to, to do it. Or since, since the purchase.
I was just gonna say, some of what he was looking at is, you know, are the holes in the right place, are the length of the holes adequate? Uh, is this a family course, are we looking at, you know, trying to promote recreational golf, are we trying to promote the longer hitters? What can you put, where can you put a sand trap, or, uh, or a tee box, or plant trees, or take trees out to help the growth of the, of the golf course? So your maintenance costs can be regulated a lot easier on the golf course. And they, they look at more than just the market analysis of it, you know, the placement of it, are, are we mowing wide enough, are we mowing too narrow? Those are the kinds of things that a master plan would provide for information. And it'll be a document, you know, a planning document that, you know, you can stick on a shelf and not do anything with, like a lot of plans end up having. Or it's something that Jason, they will use to make recommendations to the council for budgeting purposes.
Is this something we have to get done right away?
Now, this gentleman is planning his next year's activities, so he was, I mean, it doesn't matter if you wait.
I think, 'cause I read all, he said our course is very unfriendly to the ladies.
Yes.
He was thinking we need to change some things to make it a little more user-friendly for the women, and he said there's a kind of untapped potential there, I guess, there's a lot more ladies. Playing ball. Jason said he can take some of, uh, next year's budget money to help cover this mess, but, well, again, like I said, Jason said he was gonna be here to kinda talk, and I would've preferred for him to be here, cause I had some questions. Well, I, I would like to.
Well, just table it to.
I, I called him and said he couldn't make it this evening, so.
Well, I'm looking at, uh, the contour map being eleven thousand, five hundred, but back on the last page, uh, there's additional costs of, uh, maybe eight.
Number three is the only one that he's recommending that you do on the, on page, or what is that, page three?
Yeah.
Uh, the market analysis, or is it number two? Excuse me, it's number two.
Forty-five hundred?
Yep, forty-five hundred plus on page one, uh, the terms of payment is the eleven-five for the master plan itself. So eleven-five plus forty-five hundred is sixteen thousand there.
What's the cost to move forward?
I would, uh, I would suggest that we should, uh, have Jason come and talk to us before we make any move on this.
He, he's been running it, the reason why I'd like to talk to him is where he feels who our failings is, and where he thinks this is gonna help.
He said that there would.
I'd like him to explain that.
I think we need to bring, bring Jason in.
Okay, we'll wait, I'll bring Jason in.
Okay, that's what I think, anybody else?
I agree.
I agree with you, Carl.
Okay.
I agree.
We need Jason here. We got a proposal from, uh, bid from Baker Timber Products going through FEMA to burn the brush pile we've got out there. If we burn it, FEMA would pay about eighty to eighty-five percent of the cost of the burning, like the thing.
Grinding. Grinding, not burning.
I was gonna say.
Grinding. Grinding.
Eighty-five percent of burning wouldn't be a whole bunch.
No, they pay about eighty to eighty-five percent of the grinding to get rid of it. We would have the chips in, as we would see fit to use it, probably spread some out of the golf course and some of the reclaimed areas, or in the parks. Someone else can use it. I'd rather like some of the, the brush piles, I know some of the council would rather burn them than grind them, but this is a chance to give a round up and not bother those people in that end of town, so.
That's savings of seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Houses are saving?
Out of the twenty-one thousand. If it's eighty-five percent payback.
Are we guaranteed that money?
Provided that we, uh, agreed to.
Strings.
Apply to the public assistance alternative procedures, which is a brand-new program, hot off the press for FEMA, that accelerates the, uh, return that they will pay if we accelerate our response and send in the, uh, the costs for the disaster. And by that, I mean the snow removal costs, as well as the, uh, several weeks that we spent trimming trees and hauling up there and creating this pile.
What kind of boost do you have, Dr.?
It's, uh, filling out, uh, some paperwork for them. Excel spreadsheet with our times of our hourly rates, and which people worked on it as employees, and which pieces of equipment those employees used, and were assigned to.
So what are you gonna do with the rest of this pile if you chip it? We can put that, you know how size of pile you're talking, chip?
Yeah, the whole is on work, but I'm thinking we could also spread, spread it over the burn.
Or give it away to the public. Or give it away to the public.
People think there's some value to it that we could actually sell, I would hope to sell. I don't know, if you wanna take the liability, 'cause if there's any, any disease and any of that, and you spread it to somebody else's expensive yard, you'll be paying for that too.
First off, are you talking, they're gonna chip this down to flake size, or is this gonna be chunk size, or, you better, you better figure out what, what.
It's in, it's in the agreement that's in your packet. It'll, it'll be down to two inch or less.
Two inch or less?
Do they still burn at Shaver, or?
Take a week, break it all down. I guess, I don't see any size in here.
Might even be able to sell it.
Standard screen size we use when grinding this type of wood waste is four inches, therefore, most of the wood particle size should be two inches or less. The grinding time should take just over one week to mobilize to completion of the grinding.
I have a question on, uh, stuff that Scott dealt with today, where's all that brush can go to, and if they can grind it up too, or what? 'Cause there's gonna be a bunch of trees cut in future, or service goes out from the city, I was like, am I correct?
They're gonna chip their own on-site and put it right back on the hillside, re-vegetation, that's what they have in mind. If they don't, they'll actually haul it off. I did meet with them after the, after they went around, but that's their plan, just to not create brush for any deal with on-site.
Well, Doug, you ain't gonna wanna replace the two-inch chips for landscaping. Maybe you can make a deal with the college or the state home, I don't know, give it to them for the biomass heater, but that's here in Delo.
What's your pleasure, I entertain a motion to continue with the FEMA application. This application with FEMA only pertains, this agreement only pertains to this one particular situation, or is this one, any other?
Hope it's only for this particular disaster that started the fifth of October.
So it's not over great anything that surpasses this one disaster. It's a one event, but it covers more than the grinding, it's the snow removal, it covers other aspect of the two.
We have three categories of FEMA reimbursement that we can apply for, category A, B, and G, or something to that effect. And, you know, if we don't do the grinding, then we'd be just two categories that we'd, we'd be applying for. We did the extending, you know, there's twenty-five thousand, twenty-eight thousand dollars worth of reimbursement that, uh, we can expect to get back based on this starting at this point. And then the additional amount for this grinding, if you choose to go forward with the, with the Baker contract.
Is it the budget for us to pay our, our percentage of all this?
No.
We, we paid it already.
We did?
Not this, but I mean, we paid for the help already, so it's just reimbursement for the time that our guys spent on the snow removal that now became eligible because of the state's declaration.
But we still have to pay a certain percentage, they're only paying the eighty-five percent to do all that.
Paid eighty-five percent of the stuff that we've already approved.
Oh, I know, we've already paid our guys and stuff, but it's still costing.
Fifteen percent.
Yeah, for us to grind it and stuff, and we have the money for that in the budget.
We'd be reimbursed from our time that we're getting from FEMA, so we're gonna be getting a check back for twenty-five thousand dollars of time that we've already spent. So the budget, the budget can be supplemented to pay for this activity if needed.
Supplement that back for the taxpayers instead of just keeping using it? That's an idea, we like to supplement.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid, because the board was friendly for us to see the continuing.
Got a motion with yours to, 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 to rounding and reply to the FEMA grant? Got a second?
Second.
Got a second, more discussion?
I'd like to know if we are guaranteeing this one, before we.
Yes.
Bid it out.
Well, you're, you're guaranteed.
Time line.
Yes. I mean, it's not gonna be like next year or something, or like twelve months from now, we'll get a check or something.
No, no.
Now, we know how the government works, you know, mail tomorrow.
This is a brand-new program that FEMA accepted, that if we, uh, agree to the public assistance alternative procedure pilot program, we're, we're agreeable to vote it. They will expedite the amount we pay, as well as how quickly they pay us back. we're doing greenery bolted, they will expedite the amount we pay, as well as how quickly they pay us back.
They're not really giving us a date, sir.
They would, I'd, I'd be surprised if we're, if we're past February that we don't have the money back.
And you don't mind stealing Harley?
I'm stealing.
Taking our one pocket, putting it back in the other, we're taking from taxpayers, just, I mean, that's still our tax money that we're taking.
National tax money and benefiting the local taxpayer by taking the federal grant money.
I pointed out, you got eleven thousand dollars back from here for tonight, too. It's coming back out of somebody else's pocket.
Eleven thousand one hundred thirteen.
Any other discussion? Got a motion, second, to continue the process to include the chipping, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed no?
No.
How many goes?
Three, you'd like to see?
Okay.
Okay, meeting reports.
Carl? We did not have a meeting in order, we may, are we gonna have one this week or not?
We have quite a bit of stuff that we're gonna work on personnel and everything, but it's kind of like, we did have one last, we're scheduled to do this.
When, say, one o'clock this week?
Other reports, you like?
Amp and sewer, I believe this is a stay-at-home issue that, that we guys wanna talk about?
No.
Yeah. Uh, I.
Anyway, there, we talked about this ways back, about when they got that street all tore up to extend the sewer line up, to at least get to your, the amp.
I don't recall.
That's a block now, isn't it, Harley, when they took the road up?
Yeah, it was part of the state's bid for the new state home, that, uh, there would be a block of sewer line we installed and stubbed out past the project areas for future.
And they're gonna put the bid.
The contractor that was, uh, awarded the contract would be put in the bid.
At whose cost?
Uh, the city's cost.
And can you tell us what that cost is?
I don't have that bid right with me, but it was bid by, it's right at twenty-five thousand dollars.
Harley Locks, I just talked to the man tonight that's drilling and blasting up there. There's no way they're gonna put that sewer line for a full block through solid rock for twenty-five thousand dollars, so you better, I guess, read.
It was state bid, I mean, it was a bid by the contractor, so we have a definite bid for that project, two manholes, pipe stepped out on twenty-fifth, uh, pipe stepped out on twenty-four.
I wanna see it in writing, this is my thing, I wanna see it in writing.
There's a formal bid proposal, so we can get that for you.
Moving on, uh, I put that two thousand year-end utility activity report in all your folders, so you guys look that over, if anybody's got comments on it, that was the time. Uh, we are looking at, uh, putting a, purchasing a backhoe though, for our big backhoe. Uh, backhoe presenter, we approved tonight, change orders are tabled. Uh, the cleanup for the week of December, uh, twenty-five loads were taken, uh, it's a recommendation of the committee that we go to four citywide cleanup days next year, and tentatively, they're set for the last full week of April, June, August, and October. And, uh, case-by-case basis if we're taking tires or not. And water part storage area, we're getting complaints from the water and sewer departments of storing the water barrels and stuff at the sewer department. Uh, Tim, you can brought this up, we'll talk about that, or you don't need it?
Basically, what it is, is the environment down there at the sewer plant is, is not good for all our brass and copper and everything else that is stored up there. It's also not good for equipment, we've had electrical problems with the trucks, the spin docker, we had to replace all the wiring in it. That sewer gas just eats that stuff, and it's not a good deal. We're looking at, at a new spin docker now, it's not, but the wiring I know in it is, is gone. So, we just gotta find someplace, I don't, you know, as to whether we actually move the personnel or not, is, is something that, I mean, that's, that, to me, that's the, uh, the tail end of the project, is to whether we move them, but we definitely gotta do something with that equipment, gotta get it out.
I won't argue that with you, but if that's the case, we need to move all the equipment for the sewer plant too. Seriously, if it, if the water departments pick up some stuff or getting ate up by that, so is the sewer department's stuff?
We have the spin dockers, they, they parked it right over the well pit.
Right.
For, so, I mean, that's another.
Yes.
It wasn't there for a month, it was a short amount of time.
Well, there's still, we, we know there's areas you don't park stuff down there, and there's other, other areas you can do, I mean, just common sense shouldn't play a part.
Well, here regardless, the, the equipment that's in that little single car garage is not parked over a well pit or anything. Their copper pipe is corroding, all their brass fishing, the equipment is corroded, so, I guess, whatever, the, you know, you wanna put that pipe in the ground if it's corroded, and I'm not talking about just on the outside, I'm talking about on the inside.
So is there a kind of plan, you and him, have been thinking about?
Well, one of the things that has been mentioned is that we could possibly, out at the, at the street shop, is they could move Mark's stuff out of that one building that he's got there into the street shop that we could use, where Mark's got his stuff to put the water and stuff. It actually needs to train around out there, otherwise it'd be a deal of actually looking at, you know, a completely new building someplace.
About that building, that's the golf course.
They're pretty.
All that one garage, can we get that one area? One end couldn't it be closed or something?
But it's something that we need to look at, because it's just one of those deals, we can fix it now, or we can put it in the ground and fix it later.
How about you store the pipe on the street shop? All your corrosive, or the, the stuff that's corrosive sensitive, just move it.
It's either that or, or, like I said, move everything out there and have the guys meet up there and get their pickup and go down to the plant, then meet with Tracy anymore. Don't, cause if everything, if, if just the water department's getting, you know, it ain't just the water department, it's all of it, so if we're gonna do it, we need to do the whole work.
Sewer department really doesn't have all the brass and copper.
No, I'm talking about vehicles, cause you're saying the vehicles are getting malleied up and stuff.
I didn't realize that, that, uh, sewer plant has been having that process, but figured out, they've got a computer setting in that office that they change every six months, cause they eat it up. And that's one.
Most of us, uh, most of us are in the council two years ago, or two and a half, I guess, we voted to merge that water sewer. I'm still gonna stand with that, because they go hand in hand.
Well, I am too. And that's what I say, is I'm not against, I'm not against merging the personnel, but we've gotta get that equipment out of there. If you want the personnel to meet at the same spot, I don't care.
It just makes it that much easier on Tracy.
Right.
But, you know, if we're having that much problem with the vehicles and stuff, we need to get them out of there. So there's good, and then, then they can drive down to the street shop, take up their equipment, go to work, I guess.
I wanna go deal a little closer inspection, I'll, myself, and see how that, cause I've been in that room with the brass fitting, and I didn't see nothing, looked too out of the ordinary, but I have been there for a couple of months.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, none, yeah.
Okay, thanks, public safety, great.
Yes, sir. We talked about parking in the boulevard, and we went over the ordinance, and ordinance states that if it's approved, street, there's no parking beyond the boulevard, but if it's not.
Improved.
Improved, I mean, improved street, there's no parking beyond the boulevard, but if it's not.
Behind curbs.
Huh?
Curbs.
Yeah, in curbs, but if it's not approved, they can, they can park there, that means if there's no curb and stuff, they can park to the sidewalk, no sidewalk, okay? And the city, airport farming, we've talked about it, and everybody kinda knows about it and how we feel. Sorry, Don, we don't agree with your thing. Uh, airport advisory board, they're gonna look into some of the farming, and they came back with some of the stuff tonight. Code enforcement, I didn't write nothing down, but Bob wasn't there, so we really didn't go right.
We really didn't, we just kinda lightly touched it, but without Bob, we can't do it.
And then Scott has this program he brought to us, groceries for cars proposal. Somebody's got an abandoned car in their yard, they wanna get rid of it, the city will give them a hundred and fifty dollars for the grocery coupons or whatever for the car, and then they'll sell the car for scrap.
So that's something you gotta do.
I think it's a, I, I read a pamphlet on it, and I think it's a good, good idea.
Seems like a good, there's a few little things that affect the industry and other, but that would be a good, good program, you could get some dollars from it.
Sidewalks, we talked about some of the sidewalk problems, and, uh, evidently, the ones that we've had, where the little lady filled down and stuff, and nothing has been done to that, because something about landowners can't afford to do it, and the city's gonna have to pay for it, and stuff like that, and I don't know. Or Harley's trying to explain that to me, so I asked him to go talk to Scott, and I didn't do it. Airport grant closeout, we talked about that, and as on tonight, talked about the post office, on some of the new streets. You just talked about that, Harley?
We had a complaint come through city hall, and, uh, down here on Fifth Street, one of the older residents came in, said he had a concern because his neighbor just moved in there and wasn't getting his mail, and asked if the older resident was, was getting theirs, and they said yes, but long story short, they were sent to the post office, and the postmaster said that any new person coming into a residence anywhere in Hot Springs, they will not bring the mail to the front door, they have to put a mailbox out behind the curb on the street, and we as a city need to be stepping up, because what could happen without any regulations, if you could have seven different kinds of mailboxes, seven different kinds of posts, it could be a steel fence post, it could be a four-by-four, it could be a, uh, purchased one, so we should, if that's really true, we need to, uh, set some regulations, and in addition, you can't park in front of the mailbox, so now you're taking parking off of the street, you can't park in front of any mailboxes, and it's sounding like it's coming from higher up from the postmaster, so we definitely need to be looking at.
I think we need, what we need to do is, uh, approach the postmaster and tell her to show it to us in writing, if that is a federal law.
There should be, there should be information put out, actually, I understood it by looking off the computer, that usually, uh, if you have a post office with a postmaster in your community, that he's supposed to share anything that's federally mandated with the city.
And then, then they should be having hearings on it.
I know Mark Norton has a problem with his mailbox, they may even put it a certain height.
Oh, yeah?
I mean, it is by the book.
Well, they've already told me I can't have mail delivered up to the house. It has to be, and I have to have the post office box out there by the twenty-sixth of December, where they'll stop my mail.
So we need to find out.
And send it all back.
I was trying to tell you that you should really talk to them, cause I went and talked to them, and they do have specs that you guys can get, but they were saying the postmaster held that very good. The postmaster needs to talk, cause you guys were here for a while.
It's federally mandated, and that's what they're going by, and they should have shared that with us, cause it's something that as a community, we have to follow. If they haven't approached us with any, and obviously, it's federally mandated.
And my house will be the only house on Albany between Sixth and Fifth that has the post office box out on, out on the street. All the rest of them are delivered right to the house.
And belts moves in here, they didn't have to do it same time.
If the house is empty for a period of time. She didn't tell me how long. I said, well, the house really wasn't empty, it was a rental, and it was being refurbished, she said, I don't care.
So I think the city.
Fair enough.
City needs to get a hold of our postmaster and find out if it's a federally mandated program.
Okay?
I have one more thing, and it's on the nuisance. I guess, and Harley might be able to fill us in better than this, but if there's a verbal or written complaint against a piece of property, they blanket the whole block area, not just that property, so from here on out, I guess, the citizens of Hot Springs, you know, if you make a complaint, better make sure your own place is picked up first, if they're gonna blanket the whole thing, maybe we just do a problem.
Well, you, with a written complaint, you can go after the one property, I think.
They're doing that to all of them.
I think what they're doing is to make it show that we're not picking on one person, the whole block is gonna be taken care of.
I just, uh.
And I don't disagree with that in some aspects.
I don't either, shows a little bit of getting caught up, you know.
But it's just back to what Steve says, you gotta be fair with everybody, and we're not. We just did a house on Fresno Avenue, and there's four other houses up there that's just as bad, the yards and stuff, and we never done a thing to any of them.
Well, the nuisance committee should be looking to them.
Next week, or this week.
I, I don't think it's really up to Harley per se, I think the nuisance committee needs to put a policy together, that we all kinda.
That's why I wanna meet with Dave and.
In the absence of a policy, it falls on the administration to figure out how to administrate, that's what's been happening. Happy to see a policy, just like you talked earlier.
We'll, we'll talk that over.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna work on some organs.
Okay, do you think?
Yeah.
That's all I have, Mr. Gray.
That's great.
Culture Recreation, Wes?
We didn't have a meeting, but we have one, uh, I mean, the second week.
Second week of July?
Fifteenth.
January.
January, what, what day?
You have one December fourth, you have one December fourth.
Oh, we did, I did not bring my notes.
Why are you sorry?
I'm missing.
Lead frame, parks board discussion, adopt a park, uh, roller skating, uh, tall grass, and Freidel, I've gotten those names wrong, that Gerald Culligan kinda brought up, for, uh, a parks feasibility study, master plan, like we talked about for the golf course, those were the highlights of the meeting.
Been too many weeks?
On that, I know on that, that with the dirt pile and stuff, there's supposed to be some kind of barrier for the drainage and, uh, erosion. Does the city have to do that too, or just citizens? Cause all that up there by the, the library, that whole wall and stuff, every time it runs, dirt runs down into the road, and we got this humongous dirt pile that's got four or five foot weeds in the summertime. That's up there by the park, that has no, nothing around it, or, or we either need to knock that stuff down so we don't get that weeds in the summertime, or something about that.
City just kinda needs to take care of its own problems.
Yeah.
Before they try to enforce something else.
Okay.
We really need to do something with that wall at the library, though, that looks.
We did, we talked about that, I, I, I do remember that now, I was saying that meeting was last month, but yeah.
That's what happens when you have that meeting, so it's early in the month.
Are you talking about the wall behind?
No, I'm talking about the one across the street.
Not the wall, it's just actually the, the berm.
It's a dirt bank. It's a dirt bank.
Dirt bank all the full length. We actually talked about trying to maybe get with Public Works and get that cut back at some point, and actually hide receipt or do something to try to. There you go.
Make it look halfway decent, don't let dirt on the sidewalk or something.
All right, Harley?
Uh, we're having bid opening on the plunge roof on Thursday at two P M. Uh, the agreement on the purchase of the plunge and the escrow that's set aside, we have to have an answer or a bid accepted before the end of the year, or we return that hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars to the plunge owners. So you're going to need a special meeting sometime after that bid opening for the purpose of accepting or rejecting bids for the three alternatives that are out for bids on the roof.
We have a meeting Thursday night, city hall? Or do you have to wait two weeks?
You're gonna need some time for the architect to make a recommendation on the bids, so I don't know how quickly Albertson can review those and get something back to you.
It's up to them. Which one we accept?
We have to want new one. They have the two measures that are in the end order first. I don't know if we can be ready Thursday night. I'm hoping we can be ready by, like, maybe Monday or Tuesday the next week for a new meeting.
What if they drag their feet? What if they drag their feet like most engineering firms do?
Yeah, 'cause we, we sure don't wanna give up the hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That'll, that'll salt into the one right there.
Well, that's what I'm hoping for, is to have everything done by the first Friday next week.
It's possible we can do something Friday, but I don't know if Albertson can work that long. I could get a hold of him today to find out what his plans were for review of bids.
Anyway, once we get to it, we will schedule a meeting and we'll let the public know twenty-four hours in advance.
Would, would a new meeting work? While?
Yeah.
Wes?
Monday? What? Monday, baby?
Monday or Tuesday?
All the God.
They do.
I think that would be done Monday or Tuesday.
All the God all that week, so.
For vacation or whatever. So do we wanna set something for it?
Really?
I don't know. I think Friday's too soon. I hate to rush it.
I can do telephone. I, I can, I can do telephone. I mean, that's no big deal.
Tim said he'll be done next week too.
I'll be back that, a week from this coming Friday. I'll be back like the, whatever, twenty-seventh or whatever.
I will too.
Well, that'll be six of us there.
Let's do it Friday.
Let's tell them, boy, we could always do another one. Do FaceTime. Let's see what the engineer says, when we get the bids open, see what it'll look like and then.
We won't have time to give the twenty-four hour notice, so it would be a Monday or a Tuesday. Unless you give notice now and set the meeting.
Well, there ain't no sense in setting the meeting if we can know which one we're gonna, if we'd know which one we want from the bid opening, wouldn't it?
How many packages were sent out?
It's all being handled by Albertson, but I know that there were two contractors that showed up for the pre-bid fee.
We will arrange a time after, after the, you know, the, the call.
So it'll be a Monday or Tuesday unless they give a call to us. We aren't allowed to have board members present by phone yet.
Been there, done that.
Okay, we'll try for a new meeting, okay?
Anything else, Harley?
No, sir.
Okay.
I've got several things. The Personnel Manual is, is getting renewed. We've been working on that for a while. We're in the process of updating it with changes. We've got the new Personnel Manual from the municipal league. We're starting with that and putting changes to it that we want. There are quite a few changes from the old manual to the new one that the municipal league has. What we, what I hope to do is to get something put together with all the changes in there, so nobody would be surprised later. Honestly, there's so much in there, we might miss something when we get done, but we're working on that. Just so everybody knows that.
And when you're done, you can get copied there before we go to it?
Yeah. Yeah, this is, this is what it will be. This is, this is the Personnel Manual we've got now. This is the new one from the municipal league. And we're gonna have to prepare them page by page, and we'll see, so we'll make a little time. Uh, we've got more invoices from the heaven plunge in the border now. We've got all but about seven thousand dollars of actual invoices. And every, I feel comfortable with what we've got. The, uh, Evan's Landstrom's gold inventory, that's so old, we don't have any invoices on that, on almost all of it. I've went up to Landstrom, I've packed all the rings directly right now. I've got current prices and wholesale numbers from them up there. The inventory is worth more today than what they paid for it in almost every case, so we're gonna actually make a little bit of money on the heaven plunge stuff compared to buying it today.
If we're selling.
Yeah, if we're selling. We're, we're looking at options. Also, stopped it at the clock shop, and I gotta talk to them again about it when we get all done. It could be a market up there to just get rid of all the rings and start over with good inventory. Anyway, I feel comfortable with it. If anybody wants to come in and look at the detailed stuff, give me a call or stop in down there sometime because you can go through any of that. Nothing is secret, it's, it's down there. But at this point, we're just gonna go ahead and make the checkout, and we, and we, it'll show up as a bill in between because I've already approved it as a purchase. Anyway, we're gonna get that handled here very shortly. And there's fire suppression people in town this morning looking at thinning trees around town on some of the hillsides, some of the places where there's some work to be done for fire suppression. I did know, I met with them earlier this morning, we haven't talked to them since. Craig was talking about it a little bit. They've got some money available to clean up a lot of the trees around town, some of the brushes laying around, uh, laid down trees, standing trees for, for this fire problem, so we're gonna continue with that process, but for no cost to the city at this point. It's, it's just something that they could use as escape.
Is that city land or like, or private?
I think they're gonna look at some stuff near the city as well as in cities, enjoying it in city, city levels.
Are they gonna do that up there, Obles or South?
Pardon me?
You know, Obles or South that, oh, had a problem?
I think they're gonna look at all that too. They've been looking at everything along the river, the sides where it's steep.
River Road, they were there today. Where that cabin is, right at the curve? They were right there today. I seen them.
They've looked in a lot of different areas where they can just clean it up. Take care of it before we've got a fire problem, so that's very important.
What I was asking, are them private lots?
Yes.
So there will be private and city property.
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah. And they will, they handle all the agreements with the landlords. The city doesn't have to be involved. We just ask them to come in and take a look at it, see if there is that they, if they, things should be, um, that's what they're all taking in the world. That's all I have.
So who would we contact on that? If there's a landlord or, you know?
Uh, I've got, I've got the guy's name, you know, up here on your person? Wes up there? Got his name down here too. I've been talking to people up there, it was Kansas Madsen from Rapid City.
Wes Madsen's.
Yeah, yeah.
At the State Forest Street.
Yep. And he's working on an area of Rapid City. He's got, he's got his staff there. They, they look at the whole thing.
We'll have some stuff out, we'll have some stuff out later, so people know to contact.
And that's all that I have.
So, we'll start with that.
I have an entertaining motion, in German.
Hello?
Motion second, all favors say aye?
Aye.
Posed no?
Kurt, you doing the thing for the, you're not doing it?
Yeah.